You guys ready?
He's got five o'clock on his computer, so I guess we're good.
It's all it takes. Work session we don't have to. Didn't do that journey there.
We do have it recorded. Okay. Several topics on the agenda, but we were kind of Karen and I were discussing and wanted to get some input thoughts and redevelopment in terms of the way that the meeting structured. Not that there's any issues, but I'm just, there's an efficiency thing. There's the interaction with public. And just kind of, kind of refocus. The way that business is conducted, I guess, the best way. Just for illustration only, so this in lieu of. Sorry Karen here. Grab that one. Yeah, one for Karen. There you go. I just sat down and I just typed out kind of what exists and then restructured the order. It's nothing new. It's more of a restructuring. The way that I thought about the timing here, and you guys correct me because I've only been at it for a while. If there's the public portion and then there's the kind of the administration or business. And I thought about moving the public to the forefront of the meeting. Knocking it out, not as so to say, if you will. Get the approval of millions, that kind of opening stuff. But when we have guest speakers or presentations, I think it would be courteous if we allowed them the first opportunity to speak. In case their schedules are tight or if they gotta get going instead of sitting through a whole meeting. I don't know if that's been the pre-eclectic tradition within the chamber, but I thought we could do that. A lot of times the information is relevant and we could put it before public discussions. So sometimes the presentations and the material might be relevant to the public. In terms of the public comment, I kind of put public comment, utility and ordinance violation appeals, kind of that section where we get it up front. Karen had the idea and I agree of a signup sheet outside the chamber. Where you give your name, your address upfront, and then you have a topic, something specific that you're going to address during the meeting. Now, if it's a public hearing, it could be as simple as say, public hearing. And we'll wait for that section when we read the ordinance. But if it's something else. I would like them to get a focus on the topic because I think we're getting a lot of visceral reverbing going on in the audience back and forth. And at times they're taking it to places that's not relevant to the discussion. A lot of times we get a history lesson, a personal attack, something like that. I just kind of want to distill that kind of stuff out of it without losing the public comment, right? I think it's important that we put a time limit on it, a three minutes for discussion. I think it would help keep the focus of the meeting and maybe more efficient and not lose, lose sight of what the, the public is trying to say to us. Getting that in recorded and getting it in front on a, on a roll call kind of sheet, bring it into the council first so we can see who's here. What they want to talk about might be helpful. I put new council business right after that because there'll be occasions with new council business with first readings will have the public hearing with them. And I want to attach that, keep it in proximity to the public discussion. But dividing, you know, matters of first reading upfront and then old business being second, third reading resolutions, ordinances coming on the backside of that. And here's what, another portion where I, you know, feedback would be greatly appreciated. Do we need the department reports and board and commission reports every single meeting? Should we rotate them? Do one at the beginning of the month, the first meeting, maybe for departmental reports? That way our departments don't have to come in, report or have nothing to say type thing. And then have the board and commission do the second meeting and have that. And Steve, you could probably direct it to board and commission if you wanted to. Pick and choose there. Wasted paper here maybe, but second page, town manager report on the backend. You can see we're kind of with the department reports, we're moving into more of the administrative. If the public has had their input, the votes are done and they're not interested in the day of the day grind of what's happening. They could get up and leave, right? And that, that's an option for them. I just want to try to organize that so they're not sitting through. But the town manager report will come next. Of course, they don't want to miss that scripting. Clerks report, attorneys report, council issues and adjourned to claims. That's sort of a, I'm not inventing this. I found it, I think, when I was at the commission meeting, I think that. Follows somewhat closely than what they do, especially with the three minute time limit on public addressing. Thoughts, feedback, concerns on that?
What's a video advisory for?
That would be your statement where you're talking on here, you're giving us your permission. I just put that on for good measure.
I like the idea of moving public comment upfront. Because often too, we're making decisions on topics and then their input is at the end of the meeting and it doesn't really make any sense.
It didn't, yeah.
And sometimes they're also angry, we already made the decision. Now, we're somewhat flexible in that we allow. Meeting participation throughout. But that would also cut back on that if they had a chance to speak upfront. I don't think we need department head reports at every single meeting because you and Karen are so in touch with day-to-day operations. That if, you know, say. Department heads are one meeting of the month and then boards are the other meeting of the month. If the department had had something important, they could show up or they could do it through one of you.
Yeah, through the town manager.
Yeah, because I do think it's a waste for them to sit through these. We should value their free time in some respects too. So I would agree with that. And then breaking out new business and old business, I think that's a, a good thing too, because people who follow the meetings. May look for, well, what's new on this agenda? Because I attend your meetings regularly and I may not be interested if it's, you know. And then the other thing I would add is council issues, if we bring up a pertinent topic that's worthy enough of discussion. And this is just like, maybe I don't know if it's so much policy, it's courtesy with each other. Is if we have something important enough to bring it up, get it on the agenda. Or tell us you want to put it on the next agenda. Because I don't think it's fair to the public to bring up an important issue under council issues and then have an action follow it. And there are times we have actions we have to take because there's an event planned and the event planner comes in at the last minute to get us to shut down a road. And, you know, we know we have this event every year, no big deal to take action, but if it's taking action on something that the public might want input on. I, I think we should at least have that as a policy among ourselves that you bring it up as a council issue and I'd like to put this on next, next agenda, right?
I think if you're going to separate. Departmental reports and boards and commissions, first meeting, second meeting. I think the department head should be here on that first meeting or the meeting that they. Rather than just calling him.
On the first month.
I think they should be present to do their report.
Okay. I think we get decent, but, but I think there's a few, yeah.
Absolutely. I mean, I can understand not wanting to come in the meeting, but you know. If you're going to come, and particularly if they've got something that they want to ask for or report rather than just.
Yeah, like if. Yeah, I agree. Like money is, you have to be in person technically to do money decisions.
That's what I'm saying.
And unless it's really bad weather or something, I could see why they don't want to drive from, because a lot of them live out of town.
But it doesn't hurt. Public see their face once a month because a lot of the public may know the name, but they don't actually get to see the person.
Do the boards and commissions actually have somebody that comes and reports out?
Usually Steve.
Steve usually does.
Steve Marty's been in redevelopment, especially lately.
And tree commission's been great about reporting. Most of our boards are great about reporting.
I think with the IU opportunity coming up with the tree grant, I think hopefully tree commission. More, they're going to be pretty active, I hope. So.
Yeah, all of those, all of those meetings precede the. Second. Meeting of the board, so.
That would be.
Follow-up.
Yeah.
Got, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Because on the public. Comments. We're going to three minutes. But what do we do with someone like Mr. Farmer? Who? Someone else said, well, I'll give my three minutes to. You know, the bill or.
Congress type back. I think that, I think that probably has to be policy that they're not transferring. If you sign in to speak, that's three minutes. And if you sign down the register on the roster coming in. You, you're going to speak for three minutes or concede the time because your question was answered or something, but you, they're not. You're not going to transfer them like tickets on Ticketmaster. So.
Well.
Three minutes is yours. I think, Bill, I'm just asking, that would be my feelings. I. Do you think three minutes is too finite of an amount of the time? I mean, small, like it's conclusive. It doesn't encourage dialogue.
Maybe we say it as, please try to limit your comments to three to five minutes or we'll ask you to wrap it up or. The language here is very direct, which on the one hand I like. On the other hand, I, I want us to be welcoming of public comment and, you know, I mean. So maybe it's like three to five minutes, but I also think that we need to be clear with the public that sometimes we may have a question for that person. And we start a dialogue and it ends up being an eight-minute conversation because. You know, I'm trying to get at what they're getting at or. And there are times you just want to listen, take it under advisement and have no response because you want to think it through or discuss it with the team before or the staff. But we, there are times I want to be able to ask that person a question. And it, because it's not always a controversial topic or a hot topic or you just end up in a dialogue.
Well, if I'm talking about something that's specific and you're trying to figure out where they're talking about.
Because we have people at a plan commission meeting get upset that, oh, that guy seemed to get four or five minutes. It became this big. I timed him and they got four minutes. Because, you know, the plan commission member had a question. So it's not like you're trying to be unfair to other audience members having input. So maybe if we make it arranged too, and we're like, yeah, three to five minutes or we'll kind of ask you to wrap it up.
Yeah, Wayne. Sorry. Probably going to run into is. I'll pick the top of it. I've been to several meetings as well as you, something that a lot of people are in here about, the whole room is.
Can we anticipate that though, Wayne? And I was about ready, listening to Jenny and listening to what you're saying. Maybe I misspoke with public comment. Maybe that's a poor choice of words on my part. Maybe it's more public concerns. Like if you got a pothole on Main Street you want to tell me about or a stone in the park that we need to move. Or something like that. That's a section, but if we anticipate a dialogue, an active discussion that's going to transpire given the issue. Do we, do we open a public hearing for that? And I, I wouldn't say these rules should govern a public hearing. I would say these rules should govern. Kind of like when you have a concern or an issue you want to bring forth, like I need alley gravel, I need, right? And I'm not happy with the park. There's something going on or you want to clap.
With some hot topic like golf cart permits, maybe you add the line of, look, we want to hear from everyone who has a concern. But if you have the same concern somebody already spoke of, just please say, I agree about the fact that this is too high a fee or whatever your comment is. They still get a chance, but do we really need to hear 20 people say the same thing for three minutes? No, right?
Um, I agree. I think one thing with the public comment though too, is how many times has something happened? Like there's been a topic that has like a big group of people have come in and they're on one side of the issue. And they express their, well, then the people on the other side of the issue catch wind. So the next meeting, that whole group is there. And so then you've got like no one at the same, you know, opposite ends. And we've covered two minutes rather than, you know, we're just going to stick this on the agenda. And maybe those people need to be alerted, like, hey, if this is something that you're very, you're really concerned about, you need to get it on the agenda. So that we can be prepared for it, so that everybody in the, in the community knows. And we can kind of have it out for lack of a better term, rather than ping pong back and forth. I mean, I think that happened with like the fluoride. And it was like three meetings of discussing fluoride and you had this end and this end and then this.
And it wasn't for that third one that it was on the agenda. For the public knew, this is a hot topic, we might want to weigh in. Totally agree.
Yeah.
So if we get that in the room, we should say, you know, you obviously have some strong concerns that we need to think about and research and take under advisement. But the public deserves a chance to respond to your position, right? Let's put on the agenda.
The intent is not to lose dialogue with the public, right? It's an efficiency and a focus, but not at the cost of them. Right? I, I, I wouldn't want to lose that. I'm sure you all echo that. So. So we said, just so my clarity, I'm sorry, three to five minutes was the adjustment. You liked the range and there seemed to be some support in that. And then.
The other thing I do like about your point though, Karen, and I think I was trying to make it earlier is. Just because it's in the room and it's a topic, doesn't mean we have to respond on the spot and vote on it on the spot. And we should be pretty clear about that and how we communicate about public input because. If it's important enough, it should be on the agenda, even if it's the next meeting. Because there's plenty other opinions outside the room that we're not hearing from. And if all we do is keep reacting. We're going to have a different decision every other week.
Yeah, sometimes the visceral statement is kind of not disrespectful, but disregarding the nature of the depth of the question being asked and we're not in a position to answer it.
Right.
But it's meant to go out and find that answer.
Yep. And if we respond in the room every time on the spot, we may be affecting. Every department that operates the town, how we conduct the business.
Bidding to something you may not want to. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is an addition. There's no timeframe on it, but I'll take the comments back and maybe produce something and email the council for their consideration.
I do think it's nice to put the guest speakers at the front or people that have taken the time to get on the agenda and not make them wait through.
Well, let me know where this has, I, not knowing this was the topic of the work session, I had just done, done some research today to get a feeling for how your meetings. Work. And I had another issue I wanted to talk about later whenever we have time, but I did notice in the city or town code. It does already have a section that talks about how the meetings flow and it, it has public comment at the front. I don't know if that needs to be in there or not, but once you find out how you want to do it, maybe we either. Put that in the code where that's in place of what's in there now or get rid of that.
I saw it. It informed some of it, right? When I was looking at it, so.
Yeah. And the other thing that I, in that section that we would want to change, I think we maybe could just make it more generic. It says that the meetings happen on the second and fourth. Tuesday of the month at seven thirty. Maybe we could just say, the meetings happen twice a month as scheduled by the council or something to. So we don't have to change that every time there's new membership and you guys want to change the date.
As we've done.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, looks, looks great. Thanks for thinking it through, you guys.
And what are we going to do though? Uh, this is just a. My thoughts as far as the practical side. We bring up something new council business. Let's say, for example, hi Dana, let's say, for example, I mean, this would be the first time we're going to be talking about golf carts. I mean, that's going to be a huge topic. So. Then we're not going to have any public comment on that.
Well, that's why I would, that's why I put that new, I, I suggested putting the new business right next to that public comment because. I think when you can anticipate, you're going to bring in something new that's going to generate dialogue. I would open a public, I would include it, just open a public hearing. I mean. Or put it on the agenda.
Some of them by the nature of it being a C, you have to have a public hearing, but.
Right.
But I agree that, you know, you can, you can have something on the agenda and not necessarily act on it that day if you don't want to, especially if it. Requires us to look into something or think through something. And granted, this might be the third or fourth time we're talking golf cart fees. But I, I think it, it goes back to that case field too. If you bring something up under council issues, that's important enough that the public should. Have some weigh-in on it, which is just about everything we do, right?
Right.
Then we just put it on the next agenda. So you're making the public aware, we're going to talk about this.
I think it's important. Go ahead.
That's what happened at the last meeting. I think Sally, you brought it under council issues and said, hey. We're rediscussing golf cart fees. We'll have it on the next agenda. So there was, there was some. Instead of starting a conversation at the end of the last meeting, which, you know, it was record time, so.
Well done.
So you, you kind of announced that and it's on the next agenda and we'll have a public hearing and all of that stuff that's scheduled.
And hitting Karen with that early, we can get it out front of the public. You know, right after the meeting. If we know there's going to be an issue that needs to get on the agenda, we put it on there to the public, get it circulated and then we can go ahead of it.
And just with the public range too, I'm not trying to hijack, but to keep in mind. With moving our meetings to Thursday. Which is fine, but it's kind of, we had those kind of big chat, all the publication dates with the.
Violent citizen.
With this, then we publish this twice a month. You have to have the add in a week before publication date, which means you have to have 10 days. Publication date needs to be 10 days before the public hearing. So you're, you're essentially a month ahead if we're going to have any type of.
That makes sense.
Just keeping, keeping that in mind as you're planning and going through, you know, upcoming issues.
Especially related to fees or an ordinance. You're always going to be at least 30 days out on the first ad, right? Okay.
Well, I was just going to put that in to make sure that any sort of conversation, well, adding some holes for this council is something that you want to address this year. So that you can have a focus so we're not kind of. Maybe that's a, a topic for another work segment, but I would.
Yeah, it's great. I mean, like. What, what are next steps with the comp plan coming out? What are we going to look at within that comp plan? Maybe creating a five-year action plan like we did last time we did a comp plan and what do we want to get accomplished? Short-term versus long-term? Then maybe there's other. Having sat through that ethics session at the AIM conference, I think we should have an ethics policy that we, we've never had one. We've talked about it every years, but. To me, that would be a goal. And then I also have, personally, I think we need to address town hall as a goal. The building itself.
On it.
Employee retention has been a hot topic the past year and is probably still got it, you know, have attention on it.
I like, the one thing I would add or ask to consider is we develop targets and goals is develop measurable. It's important timeframe and planet, but I think we need to have measurable built in to see if we're on the right path.
Yeah.
Right? And I think establishing those in writing will help us move towards the goal, but it also holds, there's an accountability factor, right?
Yeah.
So putting that into the time.
The comp plan has some metrics built in on that action plan worksheet, but. There's even things that aren't in that, like a new town hall or, and there might be other metrics to build in. As, as we like decide what are the priorities in that plan? Because I mean, that plan is like.
Bringing it down out of the clouds of 30,000 foot. Yeah.
But that would be nice because then we could take that out every six months and go, where are we? Progress wise on these. You know, established goals.
Was it shore still just treading water?
What else, Kevin?
Uh, did you want to discuss anything or wait for the meeting on the zoning or?
With what?
Zoning or anything?
Oh, yeah. I've had some discussions with Jeanette. And Steve. And I think Steve is. Here to advocate. Jeanette has offered to give us a proposal, has given us a proposal to consider. Basically to amend, clarify and conform the town of Culver's zoning ordinance. Jeanette, you want to expand a little bit on this?
Yeah, I can. I think that this kind of stems out of. Steve is, well, stems out of recent litigation and stems out of, Steve is very careful at looking at the ordinance. And it seems that every time I get into the ordinance, I find another issue that. Makes enforcement very difficult. And makes us, one of the most important things is if we. Are ever to be successful in an action that is brought by the building commissioner. We need to be able to collect costs and fees and we have things written. In our ordinance like. We can collect all costs of enforcement, including attorney's fees, photocopying mileage, cost incurred directly. Or indirectly inferred by the county. So if I were shedding on SESTAC costs or B, I would say. You incurred the cost, but the county didn't accrue the cost, so.
There's definitely some language from that merging of the old zoning ordinance with the county and. That whole. And I think there's things that weren't intended to be in there that got put in by the county during that process. And unfortunately it was adopted that way and.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's very messy and there's things too that should just be in it. That would help people stay on track. For instance, what does a quoro mean under the statute for the plan commission? That'd be nice to have that written in. It's only one that's from the statute. So. I know years past, we had maybe plan commissions that were trying to pass things for six. When they had any six members present, we should have five under the statute to at least pass things. So there's just a lot that we could put in there to kind of help the boards going forward and then correct a lot of copy and paste errors. And then get the. Statutes. The ordinance and compliance with the statutes, but the next step is to kind of make sure that. We're. Up with the most current interpretation of the case law on the statutes. Steve, did you want to?
Yeah, just totally in favor of that. It's. First of all, we have to make sure we're compliant with our state statutes, which doesn't sound like we are in several cases. As Jeanette said, typos, I have, I have a list of corrections I've already. Got going on. So, but I'm like, I'm in favor of something that's going to be regulatorily compliant and enforceable.
Having lived in your shoes, I'm in favor of it too, Steve.
Well, you know, it needs to be spelled out to where people can understand it and it's not ambiguous. And they can, you know, because the idea is not for us to go out and find somebody. It's. For them to understand what it is they're supposed to do to begin with. And then if they blatantly do it the other way, because they feel like it, then reinforce. The zoning ordinance.
It's kind of like, and this is a much more simple example though, when you originally had your unsafe. Building ordinance and I was talking about it being unworkable, but then we've got it to a point where we stripped it down with the state statute. And we've actually successfully torn down buildings without litigation. It's kind of like that project, but on a much larger scale.
And the carryover copy and paste from when the current ordinances were adopted. It is, it references Marshall County instead of Culver in multiple places in there.
It can be possible. And I. It'd be possible, and I don't know if it's even practical to, in, in particularly difficult situations or interpretive situations within it, is it possible to cite case law? Be able to provide those or is that even valuable to them?
Well, so the issue you would be have is if that case law gets reinterpreted.
Keep moving away.
We may be, you know, I had a case that was good law for, for twenty years that I had changed at the India Supreme Court, which shifted everything, so. You, you could, you may wanna make some reference to the statute and so. And maybe if it's a really important case, saying, and current precedent is found at this citation.
Okay.
Um, which may not remain current, but.
Which would require more updating, yeah, thanks, I hear.
Jeanette, is there a way to, I know the process for changing the zoning ordinance has to go through plan commission, then it comes to the council. And it can, you're publishing hearings on that.
Inverse as well.
Is there a way to phase it so that, like, are there some immediate changes? And because we struggled with this when I was trying to oversee building commission, where we had some, a few things that were really hindering us, like the old zoning ordinance had the language about, um, uh, you have to publish in a Culver citizen. That became really cumbersome when they moved to the twice a month instead of every week publishing. So we, we made that change right away, just to allow us to publish in a pilot and not have to deal with this nightmare schedule that that created for us. Is there a way to phase in some of the changes by chapter or do you recommend just doing them all and adopting all at once?
You're gonna have the issue where you're having the, us or me show up at continuous phased hearings, you know. If we're doing it by chapter instead of.
More costly.
Instead of three, three bites at the hearing, we're gonna have ten chapters, I don't know, thirty hearings, that's if we're phasing it. It, it seems like, it seems like it's a, should be a long project that everything is addressed, so the terms match and we're not just.
It seems to me two or three batches would be more appropriate, cause it still needs to go through, it should probably a TRC, but it has to go through the planning commission and they're gonna have to review that. So it's also gonna be a matter of how much they can digest at, at one time, so.
Yeah, that was my other concern, just getting through some of the changes we did last year. Seemed like we'd have, you know, three meetings on one or two topics that they would.
And there's some other language in there that I think needs change. I've talked to some planning commission members about that also.
I think they would have been excited about it, right? Cause I know they want some of this taken care of too.
I guess my question is, is there something in there that's the, you know, urgent?
Well, if you wanted to strip out all the Marshall County references right away, that would be something that could be taken care of simply and should be done, because if we actually get to collect a cost, I don't want someone arguing it wasn't.
To go to the county.
Was incurred by the county, so we're not paying it back. So there's some, I mean, you're very basics, but I still, the thing that, the thing that I worry about with the very, starting with the very basics is I'm, I'm gonna do those very basics and then something's gonna come up that is still gonna bite us and you're gonna say, but Jeanette, you looked at it. Well, I was just looking at it for the very basics, you know, so.
For the cherry picking part.
Yeah, oh, that was a disclaimer. Appreciate it.
Should be written.
Well, yeah.
Do you see any examples where we're really open and liable?
Well, just enforcement. We just have a, a terrible issue with being able to enforce things and then mismatch terms, which leads to ambiguity. Go ahead.
And, and that, that's gonna carry over, just, I'll give you just one example, but our town ordinances don't align with our zoning ordinances either. So in a bigger picture, one example would be a driveway and our zoning ordinance, a driveway needs to be forty feet from an intersection. And our town's street ordinance is seven. So we got our zoning ordinances to me more important. If we get those done, I think then we need to actually look at our town ordinance just to make sure things aligns. That's just one example, I'm sure of many.
Well, maybe if you, I do think doing it all at once is not a bad idea.
Right.
Um, or doing two batches, let's say. Because there's gonna be some things that pop up that you may have to flag for Steve to say, I need the plan commission's input on this one.
Absolutely.
And that could take some time to work out, or you could, you know, Steve, you and a couple other people could be the advisory committee or something to Jeanette, or the liaison to Jeanette in that scenario. There's gonna be some tricky ones, I think that they're gonna wanna debate.
Every month, a new question comes up in a plan commission meeting or a VZA meeting, that's like, oh, that's not quite covered, so, yeah.
And one of the things Jeanette brought up is when I started, it was, uh, past March. And when I started shortly thereafter, it came up, if, how many people does it take to vote? So if we were, we didn't have a full plan commission. So some people thought, well, it's just the majority of the people sitting here. When in fact, and I, I have to check with Jeanette, uh, when in fact, it's a majority, regardless of how many people are there, it's a majority of the entire plan commission, entire VZA, and they weren't clear on it.
Yeah, and it's just written into statute and maybe we need to eye writing the ordinance to aid what people can do from the statutes, because the average plan commission member isn't going to the statute to look. The best they're gonna do is open up that book and at least hopefully some of the fixed guidelines that are setting in the statutes that are in our book can, can get in there and help give us some guidance. So at least somebody peeking in there goes, wait, no, that's on page. We need, we need to vote like this, or that didn't really pass.
Yeah, we've needed to do this for a while.
And there's, there's some things that I've already gotten out and I talked to the planning commission, just in general discussion about and where they wanna go with those things. So yeah, it would definitely be the liaison. And between that, we have some other changes in our ordinances that need to be made, also that've just been there forever. I think there've come within the last few years that have been changed and try to figure out why those changes were made. That's why I need to work with the plan commission and get their answers and input for it.
Anything else, Jeanette?
Needs to happen. It needs to happen.
Yeah, I, well, I think the other thing is too, is, you know, as we look at our budgets and our expenses and one thing, the other. If we can somewhat cut down on legal expenses, it's gonna help the budget, but we've been embroiled in some.
Yeah, cleaning out the ordinance will help.
Yeah, yeah.
Future legal.
Yeah.
We can hope.
Well, the one thing that, you know, um, we were handed at the end before it went to the county to be entered, a copy, which I don't have anymore. And all of the Marshall County references were not in what, what I was handed.
That's true.
And then, you know, I, yeah, I, myself, I didn't go and read word for word the entire zoning that was put into the, uh, online version. Because, you know, had I done that, it probably would have.
Well, there were, we believe there were more than one version living around that.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure the right one was ever published properly.
Yeah.
Dana, you have any thoughts?
I don't, I'm, I'm just taking it all in right now.
Okay.
I've, uh, boned up on it a bit, just listening to you guys right now.
All right, Bill? So logistically, how do we do this? Put this on the agenda for the second meeting of the, of February. Or, or first meeting. Uh, right, yeah, I, I keep thinking it's February, yeah, the first meeting in February. Which is? What is the fourth thing?
Yeah, I think the eighth is right.
It's the eighth of February. Sean, I know you might have a conflict in this, but have you got an opinion?
It sounds like a good idea to take some action on it, for sure.
Okay.
We could decide it tonight, but.
We could violate, since we don't have the new thing, we could violate. Spur of things and do it in council issues and actions.
Had a great discussion about sticking stuff on the agenda. And spending money that we kind of anticipated budgeting in a budget, so.
So then we're gonna discuss it on the eighth.
But I appreciate you waiting, because you have a significant amount of money that we don't have. So, just to go off and say, oh yeah, we spent twenty, twenty thousand dollars. You know, oh, where are we gonna get that from after you asked this?
We'll get it from excess attorney's fees.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying.
A little bit of time to process it. Is stating. So that will be on the agenda for.
Yeah, what else you have?
Sure, that is a lid for the work session for now, but look forward to these in the future. Just as a takeaway, it's, uh, what, what's discussed, I'm gonna edit. Time sheet, we're gonna put this in the meeting for the question again and talk about those and stuff and then the arrows. Um, the other thing is I'll try to revise that sheet, but, uh, take a look at the comp plan, breaking it down and start targeting areas for conversation for the council. To consider as, uh, well, consider it a goal for the year and then start thinking about our metrics towards that goal, is what I heard today.
Yeah, well, I was gonna bring it up on the council, she's, the draft of the comp plan came from MACOG. Um, and there'll be, there, yeah, committee that worked on it is reviewing it to make any like modifications. Whether it's a grammar thing or a, we missed this or that thing, and then it'll go out to the public for public comment, which I think is like thirty days. Um, and then it can be adopted after that comment period. But if you didn't see an electronic copy, uh, if you need one, I can forward it to you, cause I was, I know, I think Karen was copied on it. Sally, I think you were on it.
Yeah.
Anyone who was part of the Crosswords Culver Committee, um, I forwarded you a copy, you'll see it in your email. And I wasn't sure if Kevin was on the email and I don't think you were, so I had.
You had.
Donnie forward it, yeah, so. Um, I haven't gone through the whole thing, it's a really long document. It looks pretty good, um. Lot of work went into it.
Well, in the extent that we are going to revisit it tonight, um, just so there's no. Uh, we're gonna bring that up, um, I think Sally's plans on introducing that, is that correct? And we'll leave it at that, but we're gonna discuss the amount, um. Kind of revisiting after some of the public input that we've received and, but we do have a logistical consideration. We've extended it till February fifteenth for the licensing issue, to be advised of that. But we can push that date back if we haven't decided on an amount yet. But tonight, you're gonna be asked to reconsider the amount and Sally, I'll let you lead the conversation during, right, it's not late. You've already established that you will and, um, we'll just send you to that and advise that's gonna be all the document.
Okay. Anyone else in the council have any issues or gripes or?
Couple of things if everyone else was done. So I was just curious, I was just looking at the agenda and I saw that you have tonight, uh, coordinates for third reading and one for first reading and, and wondered, is that your general practice to just do one reading of the ordinance per meeting and then throw it out for three meetings or?
We usually always do at least two rounds, like we'll do a first read and then we'll have another meeting for second. And a lot of times it'll pass second and third in that next meeting.
Okay.
So it's kind of, at least in my time around here, has been a policy that council seems to follow to give the public more time. So even if we're five oh on the first read, we tend to put in. Now, there are a few cases where we've been five oh or we know, we, like the salary ordinance, we've looked at sometimes for eight weeks. So by the time it comes to the read and we're five oh, we've hashed this thing out for months.
Yeah.
So we generally will pass that on in the same meeting.
Okay.
But most of the other ordinances, we do at least two meetings.
True. Okay, yeah, the state statute says, except for zoning ordinances, that can be passed to one meeting that unless you guys are unanimous to, you can pass something at one meeting, but it just at least takes two, but I just was wondering if you were doing three meetings for everything, it could be a little more efficient. It sounds like you're already on, on that. So, yeah, that was my one question there. And then the other one was Jim Clevinger had sent to Bill, I know, uh, four different proposals for our normal attorney fees and I didn't know if there'd been any discussion about those or if that's something, uh, that could be.
Covering it at the first meeting, did we?
We hadn't seen anything.
Okay, um, we'll make sure that that gets distributed to everybody and maybe that could be a topic for discussion at the next, next meeting.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Well, I guess we're good till six thirty.
Find your spare.